All right, Mr. Quickly, are you all set?
I am. You still have control of it. That's fine.
There's something about coasting and then there's something about a PowerPoint slide. So I got you covered. I'm on it.
Fine. Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome. Tonight, we're here to talk a little about the future of math education in the upper school. This session is for high school families. We began a faculty curriculum review a year and a half, two years ago. Started thinking about how to adjust and look forward on math education. And we've did a lot of work and we have come to a new program that we're going to explain the foundation of tonight. So our main, we have a couple of goals in moving forward with a new curriculum. And one is we want to have the best math program in San Diego area. We also want to be able to retain and attract the best math teachers we possibly can and deliver top academic results. In addition to that, especially in a high school where math becomes much more, more complex and a lot of more class, a lot more class options. We want to ensure that we establish a math learning space that really motivates students in a very positive way. And then ultimately, we want to draw new students to SDJA. So we are bringing on Eugene, Eugene Itkin. Many of you may know, and he's going to speak in a minute about the new curriculum. But the organization of the math department is changing slightly. And I'm very excited to share with you our, our two things. One, Lily DeVoe takes a lot, it makes me feel really great to be able to call her our math new, our new math department chair. And so she's going to speak in a minute about that role. But first, we want to talk about the new, our faculty team for next year. One, Lily will be teaching, as you can see, a host of middle school courses. Martine Gijon, of course, has been here this year and came in, has done a wonderful job. And will be continuing on in the algebra's and the geometries. Jessica Moyn is a new teacher to the school. We're very fortunate to have met up months ago to talk about math opportunities at the school. Jessica comes to us after 10 years at Francis Parker here in San Diego. And prior to that, she was a math teacher for 10 years at Miss Porter's back in Connecticut. And if any of you are from the East Coast, you know, Miss Porter's is one of the oldest, most esteemed women, all girls boarding schools in the country. So we're very excited to have Jessica join us. Jenny Lee will be coming back in the Algebra II space. And Josh Bourgeon is our new faculty calculus and pre-calc teacher. Josh has advanced degrees in applied math and is a real calculus curriculum expert and has worked with Eugene for a number of years. So this is the new team for next year. Phenomenal people, professional math educators. And I can't say how proud we are to, to be able to put these, these teachers in the space with your kids. It's been an exciting process, very deep, thoughtful process. We looked at many different options. And we believe what we're rolling out for the new year is going to be both novel and it's also going to be incredibly effective. So it's a very exciting time in math education at the school. I'm going to kick it to Lily right now, our new math chair, and I love saying that. So please, Lily, take it away.
Okay. Hi, everyone. If you haven't, if I haven't met you yet, I'm Lily DeVoe. And I am really excited about my new position at SDJA this year. I've been here for five years. This will be my sixth year. I sort of settled into teaching middle school math and loving it and some sciences as well. And I'm excited to sort of take that as my jumping off point here and, and start my work as a, as a chairperson of the math department. Working with the leadership team this year, collaborating with the other chairs and the deans. Eugene, he'll talk in a second. He is the, going to be the architect of the math curriculum. And my role is more working in support of the math teacher team on the smooth operation of the department. So communication, SSTs, faculty collaboration, those sorts of things. I've taught all different levels of math and sciences as well, from fifth all the way to 12th grade. And I think this is just, we've got a really awesome team coming up for this year and a really cool new approach to math. And I'm really excited to be a part of that and to be working with Eugene in all of that. So with that, I will kick it over to you, Eugene.
Thank you. Thank you, Lily. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mike. And thank you, everyone, for joining us this evening. I'm honored with this new position and I'm excited and motivated to make sure that SDGA has the top math program in our county. We now no longer have honors Algebra II and honors pre-calculus in one year. It's now a two-year, it's now two years of instruction for a more thorough process of higher level algebra concepts with better organic preparation for pre-calculus, calculus and standardized testing. Our goal is to get most of our students to take geometry as ninth graders to make sure that three levels of math, Algebra I, geometry and Algebra II are covered by sophomore year. The reason that is, is because standardized exams such as the SAT or ACTs or whatever standardized exams that will happen in the near future, those are the three years of math that they test and those are the three years of math that are required for high school graduation. There will now be three skill assessment tests to be administered at the beginning, middle and end of every course in order to monitor progress of students and teachers. Practically every high school textbook is now, it's going to be, it's going to be new. And teachers and students will have full online access to all the texts, ebooks and the online resources that are available. In addition, we will now have standardized tests and ACT/SAT supplements starting from seventh grades all the way through 11th grades. The test supplements directly correspond to the content being taught so that every student has a competitive advantage and is prepared to take these crucial college entrance exams when the time comes. There's currently no school in San Diego County that implements this kind of prep from seventh grade onwards, which surely distinguishes SDJA. Starting next year, we will have Sunday class options for material reinforcement, standardized test prep and to make sure that we stay on pace while observing all of our Jewish holidays that we love. Our, our math faculty will have weekly meetings to collaborate on effective methods for instruction. And I will hold teacher training sessions and teach certain lectures for math levels from seventh to 12th grades to make sure that we stay with curriculum demands as well as promote student engagement. Starting the summer, students that are entering grade seven through 12 will have summer prep work and we will have the, they will, they will all have the opportunity to go on live Zoom sessions with me to cover all of that material. The goal of that is to solidify last year's material and introduce them to next year's material. At minimum, our desire is to have all students eventually enroll in Calculus AB or BC and score passing grades of four or five on the AP exams. Furthermore, we would like to have our students participate in California Mathematics League competitions, Math AMC, AIMS Penn and UCSD Honors Math Contest. We eventually want to bring our students to a level of mathematical prowess such that they will have the option to take further courses, including but not limited to multivariable calculus, differential equations and linear algebra. And that in itself will also significantly distinguish us from pretty much every school in the county. I mean, truly, our vision is for San Diego Jewish Academy to have a math program that is the benchmark for all other schools. I mean, we want teachers and students to thrive and grow as individuals and academics. We want all parents to, and students to have the confidence in a curriculum that is innovative and allow students of all levels to achieve their educational goals. We are all very, very proud of our faculty and our school. And I can't say anything, any, anything more. And I'm ready for questions.
Great. Mike?
Yes. So Eugene touched on this quickly about the maths, the Sunday sessions and the test taking in the summer work. The summer work is, and Eugene can go in deeper on this if you'd like. Summer work is going to be different this year for our math students. In the past, our summer work in the high school has been central to AP pre-work and some other, other humanities class pre-work. This year, every student, grade seven up to current elevens will have a pretty in-depth math summer program that Eugene has designed and will be putting out in the next couple of weeks. That alone is, is exciting enough for us to get them some real foundational work in addition to those math packets. Eugene will be running Zoom sessions throughout the summer to work with kids as they get ready for next August. So adding that piece into our program is incredibly exciting. It's incredibly well done. I've seen, I've seen the work Eugene's put into it. And I just can't say enough about that type of preparatory work that we've never really been able to get off the ground before and now we are. This is a two, just so you know, this is a two-year collaboration with Eugene. And he is scaling up the curriculum design right now. We are adopting in August and teacher training will be taking place some in the summer and then, of course, in August as well. So now we open to questions. I can't see the chat, so.
Yeah, I can. Great. So we do have some questions coming in and I appreciate that. Again, any questions that anybody has, just put them in the chat box and we have some time to take those now. I did want to just let you know that we're giving you a sort of a pretty high-level introduction to some of the curricular and course sequence changes as well as introducing you to math leadership and math faculty this evening. In the fall, there would be a much more detailed dive into a curriculum and course sequence. So you can be looking forward to that. Let me go to some of the questions. So one of our question is, in terms of, I think Eugene, this is tying to kind of what you were saying about where the goal is to get students as they come through upper school math sequence, math sequence there. But what about the students who will only be taking Algebra II in the 11th grade, which is what most of next year's 11th graders will be taking?
So, so first of all, great question. I mean, obviously, that is our goal. You can't accomplish a goal in one year when lots of students are going into Algebra II. But what's, what's wonderful about this is the main, the main reason we want that is for students to be prepped for standardized exams. And now they're going to have a standardized test supplement in 11th grade. So we will basically be killing two birds with one stone because once they're covering Algebra II, they will have a supplement for standardized test prep that's going to be covering algebra, geometry and obviously Algebra II. So they will be completely taken care of.
Very good. Another question, will Sunday classes be mandatory? And will the students fall behind if they don't participate on Sundays?
So that's a great question. The initial design of Sunday classes is for students not to fall behind, but for actually students to have a reinforcement and for them to feel very comfortable and potentially even feel like they're getting ahead. Obviously, we can make them mandatory because it's on a weekend. But hopefully, if they're conducted in the manner that they have been conducted in this year, I think many students will feel very good about participating and feel the, the great benefit from them.
Great. Thank you. Why are you not offering calculus? It just seems that going from pre-calc to AP Calc AB is too big of a jump and the AP Calc AB is too fast without the background.
So first of all, very, very good question. To explain that, before at SDJA, Algebra II and Honors Pre-Calc was taught in one year. That is something that's changed. Now, Honors Algebra II is taught in one year and Honors Pre-Calc is taught in a second year. And when you see the course description in the fall, you will see that when you're taking for pre-calculus as well as honor, honors pre-calculus now, at the end of the year, there's an introduction to the beginning of calculus. So therefore, all students that are going to be taking AP Calculus AB or AP Calculus BC will actually have a very good foundation of the necessary skills moving into those classes.
Great. Is there a fee for the summer programming and virtual sessions and the Sunday sessions throughout the school year?
Great question. Thank you to SDJA. There's absolutely no fee. They are taking care of everything.
Absolutely. Yes. Very good. Can you please, can you please say more about what to expect in terms of scheduling this summer? And any more about our rising eighth graders in terms of, who have been doing work one year ahead in terms of what to expect?
Okay, so when you say one year ahead, most likely the eighth graders are taking algebra. So the way the curriculum is designed is designed for remedial, advanced honors. So first of all, that's a two-part question. The first question is what to expect for eighth graders. Eighth graders will have summer prep work that solidifies algebra and introduces them to honors geometry. What was the other part of the question?
Keith, please say more about what to expect in terms of scheduling this summer.
Okay, so great question. So students will have, will have two parts to their summer prep work. They will have California Standards Exam that solidifies the previous year's content. They will also have 100 problems at the high school level that reemphasize previous content, introduce them to the next class that they will be taking. Most likely, the way it'll, it'll, it'll be conducted is there will be weekly meetings that are scheduled. So like 12 o'clock every Wednesday for pre-calculus, every Thursday for Algebra II, every Monday for Algebra I. And the students will be able to join at their discretion any one of those meetings or all the meetings for which the summer content will be covered. In addition, those meetings will be recorded. So if, probably not many trips this summer are going to be taking place. But if one of you or all of you are, you can still look at the recordings for everything.
Very good. Okay, thank you. And I think we kind of answered this. Are the Sunday classes mandatory? They are not. Correct us. How many hours do, do you think the, do the Sunday classes run?
Most, most likely, Sunday classes will be up to two hours at a time. But the students don't have to stay, well, obviously, as you get further and further in math, most likely, there will be two hours at the lower end of math. It'll probably be an hour to an hour and a half. But students don't have to stay that, that, that whole time. I mean, it's, it's mainly for, like I, like I explained, for student, for reinforcement, staying on pace and for discussions of how the material is tested on standardized exams.
Very good. I believe Mike did touch on my question. But just in case, regarding both the summer and Sunday extended studies, the additional sessions, we respond, would you mind going into detail if these are optional or mandatory? I think we said that they were mandatory and then.
Summer session, summer work is going to be mandatory. Sunday class options, I don't think we're going to make them mandatory.
Right. And the first, so the Sunday sessions optional during the school year? And then the, the virtual sessions during the summer to support the mandatory summer work are optional. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Students can look at the recordings.
Yes, you got to do the work, but the support sessions are mandatory. Or excuse me, optional.
Yes, the work is mandatory.
Okay, okay, good, good. Just to make sure everybody's on their toes, that was a test. Question, new question. Why do we need a standardized test supplement? Isn't what we learn in regular class enough or the regular curriculum?
Okay, another, another great question. What, what, hypothetically, what we learn should be enough. But I need, but when, when somebody's learning something in seventh grade and you show them how that topic is tested four years down the line and they start seeing and that and it get, and they, they get introduced to that from seventh grade onwards, it makes prepping in 11th grade for standardized exams that much easier because they see math chronologically, number one, and they see how what they're learning is completely applied on standardized tests.
We didn't understand, new question, we didn't understand the new progression of courses. After pre-calculus, can a student go into Calc AB or BC, either one?
Oh, that's a great question. If a student is going to take regular pre-calculus, then they should go into Calculus AB, not BC. If a student is going to be taking Calculus BC, then the student should take Honors Pre-Calc. Now, obviously, there are outliers. Sometimes you'll have a student in pre-calculus that is doing absolutely phenomenally and they can try Calculus BC at the teacher's discretion. It's just not recommended. But the way the courses are going to be conducted right now, both at the pre-calc level and at the honors pre-calc level, towards the end of the year, they will have an overlap to the first parts of calculus. And not to get technical, but students will be introduced to derivative, to limits, derivatives. And that is the first part of calculus.
Great. Okay, we have several more questions coming in. Let's see, the next one is, can you tell me again the order of math that SDJA ultimately wants its students to go through? And are they required to take an AP math class?
So they are not required. Our goal is to get students to a level where they have that, that all students have that option. Right now, the sequencing at the high school would be Algebra I or Algebra I honors, Geometry or Geometry honors, Algebra II or Algebra II honors, pre-calculus, pre-calc honors, Calculus AB and Calculus BC. Ultimately, we would like to have the students that are mathematically motivated to be able to take Calculus III, which is multivariable calculus, potentially differential equations, linear algebra, and even incorporate programming into the higher level courses.
Would that be a senior in high school typically?
Yes, absolutely. Well, obviously, there's some kids that would be able to take that even as juniors, potentially. But yes, obviously, the Calc III differential equations and all those courses, those would be seniors in high school, which would be, which would be a huge asset because you, at all other private schools in the county, when students are able to take those classes, they actually usually have to take them at a community college or even at some kind of college or even online. But with what we're trying to implement and with the calculus instructor that we currently have, we're going to be able to do that at our school.
Thank you. Will the summer content be graded? And how heavy will the summer, how heavy will the homework load be?
So the summer content is going to have two components. It's going to have, like I said, a standardized test component that's covered first and then 100 problems that are correlate, that are in correlation with our curriculum. I honestly believe in the theory that 20 minutes a day, four times a week is a thousand times better than five hours the night before. So hopefully, it'll be enough to where students can work 20 minutes a day throughout their summer and they can be done with everything within a matter of five weeks.
Very good. Please, can you clarify? Would kids who have done pre-calc or pre-calc honors be fully prepared to take AP Calc AB?
Absolutely. 100%. Because remember, now the students that are going to have Algebra II honors or Algebra II and then pre-calculus or Algebra II honors and then honors pre-calculus. So they will have two years of solidification of the most important concepts. And then at the end of pre-calculus or honors pre-calculus, there will be an introduction to calculus.
Great. How many weeks of summer sessions, summer support sessions will, will there be?
Most likely, there will be up to eight weeks that students have options for. Not all students will probably take all of the options. But I plan to make myself beyond available for all the classes to make sure that I can cover all of the summer work with the students.
Great, thank you. You did, there's a question about Sunday sessions being recorded. And I believe you said that they were, so.
They will be, they will be recorded in case you guys want to go on vacation.
That would be nice. Just to comment, wow, this is so impressive and comprehensive. It seems that this is now a point of emphasis at SDJA. Thank you. Wonderful. Thank you for that comment. Is some version of this discussion going to be presented to the students before the summer? That might be a good question for Mike.
We have not planned on any, any conversation like this. They, most of all, the students went through math placement with math department, their math teachers and Steve Kahn. We have not, it's a great idea. We haven't really considered it because we've been in Zoom world. But thank you for that recommendation. I think Eugene was, and Lily, let's get together on that and see if there's something we can do. Great idea. Can't say, I can't say who brought it in, but thank you.
I can, I can see who it is, so I'll give them credit privately. It is a great idea.
I mean, I was under the impression that students should know that they will have that summer work and that they will have the options to go on live Zoom meetings to have that summer work.
Summer work, yes. I took the question that we were talking about next, the new program more comprehensive.
Oh.
Yeah, summer work, yes. Next steps in the upper school will be our summer letter, which will have our textbook list for all classes. Also, all summer work for all classes will be embedded in that summer letter. And Matt, the math summer work will be in there along with narrative about the Zoom session. So they will be aware through that communication. But having a meeting like this and laying out the future of math education, we had not considered yet, but still an excellent idea.
It is a really great idea. Will you be following up with an email about the changes? This is something that Mike and Eugene and I have been looking, Eugene has got some great detailed print material ready to go. I think we want to phase that out, give this high-level sort of introduction and preparation for most immediately the summer work. And then spotlight a little bit about the exciting changes you can expect to see when we return in August. But that once students are back and in their classes, doing that deeper dive with you in terms of the nitty-gritty about what that's looking like. So definitely been, we've been thinking about some print materials, some FAQ, some things for parents and students to read in advance and then come back to like a town hall meeting for further conversation. Got some of the same questions. Summer, will summer work be continuing every summer or just this first summer?
So our goal obviously is for summer work to be given to students every summer because our belief is that if it's conducted that way, students will start the school year with confidence. There won't be any lapses in, in development. And math will not be difficult for them. The goal is for them to have an easier time, to have a smooth progression and to not find math, you know, to not shy away from math, but to actually be inspired by it.
Very good. So when looking at summer work for the students in areas of academics, will you be looking at workload? Mike, I know there's not just math, summer work, do you want to speak to that, to, to that one?
Summer work in the high school historically has been centered in AP pre-work with additional, some humanities, some, some years will be some senior sum reading, but for the most part, it's AP pre-work. So this is the first time we've reached all the way from seventh grade on up in a very systematic way with math. We always, in non-AP classes, we always modulate how much summer work we have. And the humanities, many of you know, it will be reading. We want to keep the kids reading all summer. There's some of those humanities classes that might have some, from some light writing prior to the first day of school. But there will be a balanced approach. But math is going to be a very structured summer coursework, grade seven on up.
Very good. A question, yes, the meeting is being recorded. So if you didn't get to hear the whole meeting, the link will be sent out to you. And to anyone who wasn't able to attend the meetings this evening, that will be the case. Comment the, we're just wrapping up in time here. I think I've got two more things in the chat box. A comment, the Silverstein family is so excited to welcome Eugene and Lily in their new roles at SDJA. So welcome, you guys. We're very excited about that. We're also very excited about our math faculty. Top shelf, very exciting group of educators. And thank you for the presentation. Yes, this is where the work comes, just trying to balance students' time to, time to relax as well. Always, always a challenge, especially in these unusual days, striking that balance. We all know that we're working towards that. So with that, Mike, did you have any other closing comments? We are at 8:15, which is our time to wrap up. I, I do want to just thank the faculty. And Mike, I'm sure you'd like to probably do the same. I'll let you close.
Absolutely. I'd like to thank everyone for joining us tonight. And we're incredibly excited that we're at a new era in math education. And we're incredibly excited that we're at a new era in math education at, at the upper school. And there's been a lot of work back channel to put this together. I'd like to thank Kelly and Eugene and Lily, Martine, everyone that's, that's had a hand in this. There's been a lot of thanking for a long time about math education. And now we're at a really exciting point in, in the history of our school. Our math faculty right now for next year is, is, is unbelievable. You know, Martine coming in and the opportunity I got to meet with Jessica months ago, talking about coming to SDJA. And, and here we are. And so next year is going to be just an exciting year. So thank you all for everything the faculty's put into this process. And thank you all, the upper school parents for supporting us and supporting us through the COVID-19 spring. It's been a, it's been a interesting couple of months. But as a community, we have done phenomenal work and so proud to be, be a part of it. So thank you for coming tonight and thank you all, the faculty. Their pictures are back up there. They're the stars, they're out on the front. We're just there to help. So thank you all very much.
Yes, thank you very much, everyone, for coming. A special thank you to the faculty who came to join us this evening. Thank you so much. Great to see you all. Good night.
Thank you, good night.
Thank you.